Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, um, starting at the very beginning, um, yeah. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak?
Is there any member of the public?
Um, so, um, in the student representative report?
So as the, as the board knows, I said in the Friday memo I sent out, there's exams this week. Um, and there was an SAT that was scheduled for tomorrow that is not taking place now because of the weather. So that got rescheduled for the end of April. So the SAT, Gail, two years ago it became dead.
Two years ago.
In, in the school day, one free SAT, um, but there was a snow date and we invoked that snow date just not knowing when, what might happen tomorrow. I heard it was snow.
Well, that's a dirty word.
Sorry.
Um, okay, so.
Good afternoon.
They're nine, yeah. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, we just want to take a moment. The last meeting, we talked about really an interesting opportunity, how would our students to, um, respond to what was a national, what is, is a national movement. On March fourteenth, kind of a grassroots, organic, um, movement had been forming to, um, stage a, a walkout. I'm not even sure of the organizations really that began the entire movement, but it got some incredible legs and a lot of momentum. And you probably all saw the news, it, you know, nationally, there was a lot of action. Um, I'm really proud of our students and the responsibility that we engendered in them to take the mantle and really, in their own way, um, take advantage of making a statement as really about ending senseless school violence. Really ending the entire phenomenon as opposed to making it a singular issue. Mr. Saito and I met with about thirty students, um, and that was about a month ago now. And as I updated the board, we started to get some really good student-driven feedback about how we can respond. We did say one condition was that we can't condone kids being outside, though a lot of school districts had gone through, um, a number of, um, episodes where kids going and, and, and marching and so forth on the school grounds. For a variety of reasons, we felt that that really was not appropriate, like the last board meeting. The students understood that, um, and we had a really good talk and we told them it's their day, create it. We had three goals in mind for that day. Uh, number one was to amplify student voice. So how can we get students to own this day and speak? Um, and they did, and did very well. How can we keep it age-appropriate? In the last meeting, then we talked about what does the K six level look like, the seven, eight level and the high school level? And the third one, which is obvious, was making sure that the students, um, were maintained in a matter of safety. I had two interesting conversations with parents who were disappointed with how the day was handled. And I want to be intellectually honest and fair and be very transparent about how those transpired. There was a sense from a couple of folks that we missed an opportunity. And, you know, I think if we don't listen to the feedback, we'll never get better. So I appreciate the feedback, respectfully disagree. I feel that this day was not like, um, a football game or a track meet where we have scheduled students outside. That was the criticism, that we always have scheduled events with students outside. Um, my feeling was that those are very different from this day and why students would have been scheduled to be outside if we allowed them. And they could have. We didn't tell students you can't go outside. We just said that we're not condoning it and we have to keep our code of conduct in, in place there. Um, and here's an alternative. So, but it was an interesting conversation. It was a good conversation with, with those two individual parents. I'm sure there were more. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm sure there were definitely more. Um, but at the high school, uh, at about nine thirty, actually about nine fifteen, we had some of our partners from Madison Police Department show up. And they were showing respect to the students as well. They just said, we're just going to be here to make sure everything, you know, goes, goes cool from the outside looking in. And they were round of applause when the kids spoke. Um, they were right there with them and like we've always been with the Madison Police Department. Very close and very technically aligned. Representative Kokuru showed up around nine twenty. Uh, she and I walked the building a little bit. She talked to a number of students and staff members. And then she, um, became very, very present and available for kids, um, to have conversations with. Yep, about seventy percent of hand students participated in the events as, um, the students went from their classrooms. We had a separate schedule. We gave them a full hour. We condensed class periods about five to six minutes so that every class period met and nobody missed academic time in that way. Uh, but we were able to gain about an hour by doing that. And they left and they went over the bridge, stayed in the facility, um, and the band played America the Beautiful. It was a very moving, you know, um, march across. It was really powerful. Um, John Gage did a great job with the kids. Kickoff speeches, Mr. Saito and Terry spent seconds really just kind of getting things started and then we turned it over to the kids. And, uh, it was an entire kid event adults did really sat there and observed and applauded and recognized them um, for the way they handled things and, and for their messages. There was a very moving three-minute, um, period where the students, uh, what they created a lie, a lying, where they lie down and it was symbolic to represent that, um, how quickly, from their perspective, a gun could be purchased in certain states. And we talked about this is more than a singular issue, even though that issue was always front and center when you talk about violence. And the kids were great to, you know, kind of acknowledge that and really try to capture all angles of this issue. But the, what the speech that was read during that time period was, that three minutes was, uh, Nibbbling. It was, um, a poem, um, that was written by a student from Parkland, um, Florida, from Barry Bristone High School. And it was written by a twin who lost their twin in the shooting. And, um, the, the student who read the speech just delivered a stellar performance. I mean, everybody just was moved by it. It was outstanding. The events transitioned into the, um, the quote-unquote walkout into the cafeteria and a series of kids got up and, and delivered powerful messages to their, uh, to their peers. Um, at the same time, on the bridge, students were able to video record messages that they wanted to send out and blast out to the social media world, um, especially to their peers in Florida. And a huge letter-writing camp, maybe a boxes filled, um, of letters that kids wrote of support. I think, uh, you know, the kids took advantage of Representative Kokuru and they were peppering her, which she did a great job explaining that Connecticut is one of the few states that really has some, some tight laws, um, especially around gun control that some of the kids were asking about. But, um, she also did a great deal of talking about mental health issues and so forth as well, so expanding the speech. We did have about thirty percent of our students not participate and for, for a variety of reasons. And I felt we gave them an incredibly respectful way to go to Library Media Center and there were four classrooms set up. And, um, by and large, I made a point to go in there because I wanted to make sure that I, you know, was not only with the kids who were delivering the messages, but I wanted to make sure that I got to see it in action. And, um, yeah, what's a fifteen-year-old boy going to do during that time? They were talking with their friends. They were on their phones. Some kids were reading. It was, it was just their choice to do that and that was perfectly appropriate. So that was kind of the overview of, of the high school. Uh, Poulsen was the surprise day, uh, surprise event of the day. About eight to ten young ladies had approached Mr. Henderson in the weeks leading up to the, this event and had some, um, ideas. And, uh, Mr. Henderson did a spectacular job working with their parents to really try to make it meaningful. Our old friend Matt Keller's daughter, um, I wasn't going to name students, but just because he's an old friend. Uh, his daughter Lily was amazing. I mean, she was unbelievable in, in her substance, but also just in her poise. And I reached out to Matt, um, that afternoon to let him know that, um, as moms and dads, I think we all like to hear those, you know, when our kids are doing things that we don't see and should make us proud. But, uh, about eighty percent of the students, uh, went into the, and Gail, I think you were there correctly, into the gym.
Yeah, they were great.
Yeah, um, a seventeen-minute silent period, which for, you know.
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade boy, man, when I was there, I couldn't do anything for seventeen minutes. So that was, you know, an impressive, um, symbolic gesture on their part. Um, and yes, again, if some kids follow their peers, of course, some kids follow their peers. You know, I mean, that's kind of what middle school is, right? Um, but a, a lot of kids by and large, you know, participated with a lot of meaning and a lot of heartfelt feeling behind it. K six, business, you know, we said that. That was going to be how we were going to treat K six. Um, that's kind of how we've done when we've had, you know, world events impact us. We've always looked at that age group and done our best to maintain that. We can't make assumptions that, um, any child from, you know, up to twelve years old, what they might be conversing about with mom and dad at home or might not be conversing about. Once you get to Poulsen, I think you can make some reasonable assumptions, but we definitely have drawn that line historically. As a follow-up, just today, I spent about twenty minutes in the phone with, um, scheduling aide and one of the primary aides for Congressman, um, Courtney. If you go and Google Congressman Courtney's geographic region, it's half of the state. Because I said to Wendy, I said, get me the superintendents of Congressman Courtney. It literally is like you take the ninety-five and just draw a line and then everything to the right of it is his. And then there's five other districts on the left. Yeah. So I know it's based on population. So there's about fifty or so superintendents that I, I promised that I would reach out to and he's very interested. She reached out and said he's very interested in hosting a town hall event of high school students on this topic. And he also has, um, talked to his aide about doing a hand-only event in addition to, um, a larger, you know, venue. So, um, that's really exciting. Um, and I gave the students my word that if they conduct an event and they want their voices amplified, I'll do my best. And Hartford Current, I thought, did a great job coming in and the Source and Shoreline Times, so we got the word out. But this is a great next step for them. And then finally Senator Kennedy couldn't be there, uh, but he promised that he would do some type of focus group work at the high school as well, have a conversation with the kids. So, um, it from the beginning was all about the students and it continues to be. And as I say, with most of these events to either teachers or to kids, anytime you have a standalone event, that event is great, but what happens every day after is what really matters. So that's what I'm hoping to kind of keep momentum with the kids. So that's, if any questions, but that's kind of the.
Question.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys know the answer to this, but did I read correctly? I think Connecticut has the second tightest gun laws in the country next to Cali, I think California is number one.
Unfortunately, there's Sandy Hook.
Yeah, yeah, I think Connecticut is number two.
And I don't know, I've always heard we're in the top, you know, whatever, three or four states. So, and that could be the case as far as how that's evaluated. Representative Kokuru did a really nice job talking about the debate after Sandy Hook. She did a really nice job articulating the, um, the decisions that had to be made in certain, um, voting districts based on constituencies and so forth and how it was a real bipartisan, you know, approach to that. And, um, some folks literally told her, I'm going to make this vote and I'm not going to be re-elected. And that, that happened to a couple of her colleagues. So it was a, um, I, I have a recollection of that time period, you know, as far as I was more into the school-based, you know, issues at that time, it was so in our face. But I do remember the news coverage of it being, you know, an international event, um, you know, as far as the hearings and so forth. And, and Sandy Hook representative speaking on behalf of the bill. But I didn't know until I talked in the last week, um, as a representative, how challenging that was and really all the different parts that were moving around. It was pretty fascinating.
And when she explained that to the students, I think it gave them some comfort.
Yeah.
As, as much as this was about a national support of a school in Florida.
Yeah.
Um, it gave the kids comfort in our district to know that they live in a safer state.
And that things can actually happen.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks to the, um, the school administrators for helping to facilitate what was a meaningful event for the kids.
Agreed. Yeah, outstanding job.
Because I think it was probably also cathartic for a lot of them.
It was an emotional day. So if the board remembers in December, we had four students that did independent study project who came and spoke in, uh, I remember, you know, what stayed with me was that the course that they took that was created and approved by the board was quote-unquote life-changing. So that's how powerful it was. Um, we had been asked to present, um, that work and to have those students, actually with me and Gail and a couple of teachers, present at a national conference in Boston this Friday. So very, very exciting opportunity up in Boston. The Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, ASCD, is kind of the, the benchmark for education leadership organizations internationally. And there's a conference in Boston, their annual conference up in Boston. And, um, we've been invited to speak on panel and have focus groups with the kids to talk about their experiences. A lot of districts, the folks that we work with, a lot of districts want to hear about the kids' experiences. So it's a, I mean, it's a testament to all the work that was done to get it there. But also it's quite a compliment to the district to have us on that platform speaking. So I wanted the board to know about that. Pretty exciting. And, uh, last thing, just really briefly, we had, um, a really cool professional development experience at Poulsen today, this afternoon. It's, um, I think folks will look at the way we try to train our teachers as the fourth, kind of standalone professional development days. But more and more, we try to build in to department meeting time, grade level meeting time, faculty meeting after school time. And there's a little phenomenon called EdCamp, which is, um, an opportunity for teachers to have a topic and almost self-study and go in deeper together. It could listen to a podcast and then maybe take it from there. They could, um, you know, have a topic that, watch a video or something like that and take it from there. So Becky Frost, who had Frank Henderson, um, dynamic duo. I would say Becky really did the lion's share of planning here, um, had six different topics for teachers. Motivating the unmotivated student, teaching students use effective effort, building strong classroom communities, solving thorny behavior problems, helping students with anxiety and managing group work. This was based on surveys from teachers about topics that they wanted to delve in deeper. These weren't opposed, these came bottom up. And then she went out and found resources and I sat in with one, uh, for about a half an hour. And it was powerful, I mean, how committed they are to, no matter where you are, you're always on a path of improving. But a whole different take, you know, people think of professional development, you bring somebody in, they do a supernova kind of effect training. They leave and you got to carry it on. Really trying to embed this work, a testament to the work that Gail does and, and all the administrative teams. So just wanted to share that. And that's it.
Okay, so, board member comments?
Just, uh, this is the last meeting before we send off the, uh, the vibe students for the national, um, competition in Nashville.
Tomorrow morning?
Uh, they're leaving, yeah, Thursday.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. Yeah. It's the snow, so, um, so they'll be looking to get south of here.
Yeah.
And, um, they'll be performing on the Grand Old Opry Stage. And the, um, most recent fundraiser was the kickoff, send-off concert, uh, concert, which was last weekend, uh, last Friday, uh, sixteenth. And it went, it was phenomenally well-attended and the community has really been supportive. And, um, the kids are hoping to go down there and do a great job.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck to Vibe.
Any other comments? Okay, so, um, board committee reports, planning committee.
The planning committee met earlier today. Um, the first item on the agenda was that Martin Glasser came to talk to us about a trip for April twenty nineteen to Sicily, Italy. Uh, this would be his tenth trip with students and the shopper ratio would be one to six. We'd be using Explorica as a tour company, which we've used many times before. Um, the trip would be a Friday to Saturday with a twenty-six kid limit. Um, and they need twenty kids in order to make the trip happen. It'll be open to next year sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Um, it will come for a vote at the next meeting on four-ten. If you have any questions or concerns before then, just let me know. Now, um, we spoke about vertical teams. Just to give some background, um, before we started the curriculum writing cycles, many of our K through twelve teachers have never met or worked together before. Um, and now that we have completed the curriculum writing and rolled it out for LA Mass, Social Studies, and World Language, we're moving into phase three of the process. How are the students responding to the new curriculum? Are we reaching all students? Is there anything lost in translation? So now we have to have teachers look, well, the idea is to have teachers look at actual student work and analyze it. What the students are actually doing, just not grading it. And, um, vertical team meetings, have one teacher from each grade le, grade level get together and discuss an area, for example, math, and find a common piece to review that is applicable K through twelve. Recently, a group looked at math and progressions, looking for gaps. Um, is it inconsistent over time? Are we building upon themes? They use this along with current research and expert opinions. They discuss them and then they report them back through team meetings, coaches, and the admin councils to all teachers. These vertical teams allow for recognition of what other grades are doing and working on, along with connecting everyone K through twelve back to the system and the strategy, which is at our core. And these vertical teams and meetings are happening for LA, World Language, Social Studies, in addition to math. And will happen for science once all the new, new curriculum is written and rolled out. Um, and then we went on to talk about the new course response at Daniel Hand. Um, as many as you know, many of you know, I think I reported on it, I feel like it was maybe January, but it might have been December, um, about the new curriculum and pathways, um, that have led to many new courses being offered at the high school, starting in the fall. So Gail, Gail shared with us, um, the levels of current student interest for some of the new courses. I just want to clarify, this does not mean that all students will get these courses. It just shows the high level of interest in them.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you.
Yes. The numbers have been very high compared to prior years, especially, um, in courses that have been recreated and others that are brand-new offerings. For example, biotechnology, which we heard about here, um, world traveler and modern Middle East all have very high numbers for next year, along with the independent study course that, um, Tom just talked about where we saw the students here. It was a pilot for this year, I thought with five students.
Five.
Okay. Um, and thirty-six students have requested to take it next year. So this is all just very exciting news. Um, and then we just talked about future agenda items again, um, only because we wanted to have the discussion with Tom. He was at the Daniel Hand PTO meeting at the last meeting, so just went through some future agenda items. Um, and Gail and Tom will work to try to set them up on the calendar for the next few months and even into next calendar year.
Personnel committee.
Still no update.
That's all right.
First meeting was supposed to. First meeting was supposed to be tomorrow, but.
Is it supposed to snow? Why do I blame you? Policy committee. So the policy committee met tonight. We, um, took back the social networking policy, first and for the review within our policy based on discussion last time. We had a good discussion about it. We will make some amendments to the policy based on our discussion. Nothing majorly substantive, but just moving stuff around to be a little more palatable. Um, and we'll bring that back to the board at our next board meetings, review all for review for a second reading. Can we get a few open questions at that time? Um, we also discussed some minor language inconsistencies that Greg had found in his perusal of our bylaws. Um, some sections had been updated and, and one had not in particular. So we discussed that. We'll make those, um, recommended edits and bring it to the full board at our next meeting for your review as well. And that's it for right now. Keep you posted.
Thank you. Finance committee.
Um, which did post?
Next week, right? Lauren Liasa.
Yes, we, uh, met last week. It was rescheduled because it was canceled due to a snowstorm. So we did meet on March fifteenth, um, where the director of development at Lauren gave an update on the new student support services Ocean Avenue Learning Academy. Um, their work with the Milan International Academy and collaborations with National Coast Guard Museum. Uh, they noted that Marine Science Magnet High School and the Riverside Magnet School were recently named schools of distinction. I'm very proud of that. Uh, the Lauren Regional Education Service Center also recently announced a partnership with UConn School of Education, whereby students in the Masters of Special Ed Program are given field placements with learn and may receive other benefits. Uh, finally, the RESC Alliance directors reported on their, um, testimony before the Appropriations Committee regarding fiscal support for magnet schools, addressing, like I mentioned last, the current fingerprinting policy and how onerous that is for substitute teachers. They're working really hard to address that. And support for early childhood education. Uh, finally, Alliance members are also working with CAPS and the Connecticut Technology Assistance Project to work on an educational software hub for student data privacy.
And that's it for Lauren. Thank you. Okay, so, um, so we have a new committee, um, that, that was not, um, it isn't an, an item on here. Can we get it? So we, so we have to vote to add.
You want to, you want to put it under future agenda items and just give the report and then we can add it to the agenda in the future? How about that? Ready for the needle.
Well, but if we were to accept the report, I think we should.
Ronald McCarron?
Probably just, we should probably just.
Amend the agenda.
Amen the agenda. So.
I tried, Lauren.
So that, that goes on. I'm sorry, can you?
Number eleven, yeah, so take action.
Okay. So can you present now? No, we have to.
Vote to add it.
Yeah.
For number six point six.
Okay. So.
Move to half, right now?
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to add item six point six to our agenda, um, a facilities committee report.
Full second.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see. Much as it passes. Okay, so now, now, six point six is the facilities committee report.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all.
With all that, uh, with all that supportive framework, I would like to, uh, read the report now that, uh, the facilities committee had its inaugural meeting on Tuesday, March thirteenth at six-thirty PM. We kicked off the meeting with a review of the pilot committee's mandate, mission, and structure. The committee will be taking responsibility for administering all facilities-focused functions of the board through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty, whereupon it will provide a final report to the board. And the board will, will determine its desire either to allow the committee to sunset or else potentially to create a permanent facilities committee by amending the board's bylaws to make it a permanent standing committee of the board. The committee consists of three board members with one serving as chair. The present makeup of the committee is Seth Klaskin, serving as chair, Galen Colley, and Greg DeSantis. The board chair will be ex officio to the committee, as with all other committees. The facilities committee then discussed the means by which it will carry out its mandate and mission. Bill McMinn was introduced as the district's and town's facilities director. And it was noted that Mr. McMinn will be given time during each regularly scheduled committee meeting to report to the committee on the state of facilities, project progress, and any other updates he may find important to provide or of interest to the board. The committee will begin in earnest to find, uh, to process, excuse me. The committee will begin in earnest the process of reviewing, uh, the district recommendations in preparation of a ten-plus-year master facilities plan, to be called the Ten Year Plan. And we'll abbreviate that as TenYP going forward. So you guys all know there's new alphabet soup, new alphabet for the alphabet soup. Uh, the committee also addressed a suggestion made by Greg to establish a community advisory committee under existing bylaws to bring broader perspective, expertise, and credibility to our work. The facilities committee members will work to recommend helpful disciplines and stakeholder groups. Example, real estate agent, architect, maybe PTO representatives, um, et cetera, and specific names for consideration, uh, at future meetings. We welcome suggestions, but please note that they will be taken into consideration. The committee will find ways to solicit community input from time to time and will employ the community advisory committee potentially to assist with such endeavors. In terms of its discussion on the means of carrying out its mission, the committee finally noted that it will need to report often to the finance and planning committees to keep them apprised, uh, of developments that will impact their committee work. Galen will be reporting to finance and Katie will be reporting to planning. The balance of the meeting was devoted to Superintendent Skarice and Bill McMinn's presentation of their prep. of their preparation for the 10-Year Plan. They presented the software that is being used to identify and calculate the projected cost of each project item, as well as to provide links to backup material for each item, or supporting material for each item. Bill has been working closely with Chuck Warrington from Colliers International, who has consulted to provide valuable project pricing information based on comps whenever possible, so the draft document is shaping up very accurately as a planning tool. This plan will be shared with the board, and ultimately, the board will vote on the final plan recommended by the committee to address facility needs and priorities. The adopted plan will serve as the basis for the board's submissions to the town CIP committee. The board will maintain a plan that extends further than the CIP's five-year planning cycle in order to utilize best practices in long-range facilities planning. It will be the goal of the committee to keep the entire board updated so that informed decisions can be made in this important area. Finally, the committee determined that the whole board would benefit from a presentation as soon as possible as context for the plan, and in order to offer input into the final version to be adopted by the vote of the whole board. To accomplish this, Board Chair Katie has reached out to notify board members of an upcoming board workshop to take place an executive session. The executive session format is necessary for this initial meeting due to the need to speak frankly about facility security planning that is endemic throughout the plan. Once the board has context and can see the priority that student security is given in the planning, future meetings are expected to have more public format to seek open input and ensure transparent process. The committee members took special note of the excellent preparation work the district has done, and the committee is excited to share the draft plan with the whole board. That's it. End of report. Thank you. Any questions?
Consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. You know I can call out a donation. There's a donation of $1,563 from Burstein Volby and McCann PC to purchase 12 new logo golf bags for the Boys Golf Team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6th.
Oh, wait, we have to...
Oh, duh. Thank you. So it was motion second, there was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Second. Discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And action item two, or I need a motion to approve the removal of used books and equipment.
So move.
Can I ask a question before you do that?
We need a second, and I need with discussion.
Second?
Discussion.
No, don't. What do we do with those? Do we donate? Your question.
Yeah, we can, and, and where appropriate, we do. A lot of it is not donateable, if that's a word, and needs to be discarded.
You mean as in the condition of it?
Yeah, yeah, useful life and so forth.
We've actually been very actively seeking ways to donate because we're doing a lot of weeding with library books, and it's very difficult to donate. They, they actually, at times, make it an expense for the district to do the donation to transport things and...
But, you know, but on the other hand, we tend to use a lot of those items for their full useful life, so we're getting a lot of mileage out of them, so to speak.
It just seems like what you're listed for.
Yeah, no, I agree.
It breaks my heart.
Plenty of people don't want to supplement their history.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Is there any old business? Future agenda items? Any future agenda items? Meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to adjourn. I still need a motion to adjourn. Okay, any discussion? No? Motion carries.